Welcome everyone. Before we begin our reorganization meeting, I want to call for the installation of all of our newly elected council members who are not new to the council but elected for another term. And so Clerk, can you report on the certification of election and qualifications of councilpersons elect Hale, Kim Cho Han and Welkowitz?
It's my pleasure to report that the Middlesex County Board of Elections has certified the election of Matthew Hale, Stephanie Kim Cho Han and Susan Welkowitz as members of the Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park. Once they have subscribed to the oath of office and allegiance, they are qualified to assume their duly elected positions on the governing body.
Okay. And now I'd like to ask councilperson-elect Hale, who will be administered the oath of office and allegiance by Senator Patrick Deignan.
(Inaudible). He says, "Oh, don't worry, I'll do whatever Susie does."[110.03][110.03](Laughter).
Do you need me to hold?
I'm not going to pull up the wall, but I say this, and I'm not jinxing it, but I say it. Whenever I watch Fox News, and I'm ready to jump off a bridge, I have to drive over to Highland Park and realize that there are sane people in the world. And when you look at the quality of the folks that are about to be sworn in tonight, it is not by accident. But this borough encourages and fosters, is what this country is all about. And this is a special person. Think about, first of all, Doctor in front of his name, and we have the connection of Seton Hall University. He is really a special person. And Highland Park should be very, very proud of that. Ready to take the oath?
Did you need me to hold?
(Inaudible).
Sir?
What is your oath?
Yeah.
Team perfect.
I, Matthew Hale, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of councilperson according to the best of my ability. I do further solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. And to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help God. (Applause).
I was going to hold for her. Yeah. Now I'd like to ask councilperson-elect Kim Cho Han to step up, and she will be administered the oath of office and allegiance by Mayor Wayne Smith.
So this is a real treat for me to get the opportunity to swear my God job, right? (Laughter).
(Inaudible).
So I say your name.
I, Stephanie Kim Cho Han.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully, impartially, justly perform all duties of the office of councilperson according to the best of my ability. I do further solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help God.
And now I'd like to ask councilperson Susan Welkowitz to step up. She will be administered the oath of office and allegiance by Senator Patrick Deignan, who is our favorite state senator.
(Laughter).
Susie and I go way back. I used to be Chair of the Education Committee, and she was one of the few people, and I'm not saying this to blow up her ego, that I used to rely on, especially in terms of charter skills. No one understood that issue better, and was pure a part of it than she was. And she, again, was a tremendous asset for the borough. Ready? I?
I, Susan Welkowitz.
Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of councilperson according to the best of my ability. I do further solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people.
Okay. I am now officially calling this meeting to order. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on December 5th, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue on December 5th, 2018, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones. An assistive listening devices are available. Bruce Morgan, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this point, I'd like to ask Pastor Seth Capedale to step up and do the invocation for us.
Thank you. Let's turn. Almighty One, you tell us we can compute whatever's on our mind. As we begin a new year, 2019, we begin this year thankful for a community where we can live and thrive together. We begin the year thankful for the safety of residents through a very frightening, horrific evening a few nights ago, fire. And we're thankful for the fire department, for all the work to take care of our residents, and for your presence through all that. We ask, oh God, that this year, each person who's been entrusted with leadership in the Borough Council, in the administration, and in every aspect of our community life, will feel that they have the support needed to help this community thrive. We thank you for the fact that this is a place where people want to live for decades, for their entire lives, and we thank you that it's a place where people can come from far away and arrive here and know they've found a safe haven. And we pray that this may continue to be a place, a haven in the middle of New Jersey, which can be a beacon for the entire state. I ask that your presence be upon each of the Borough Council members, the mayor, as they lead us throughout this coming year. Proudly send you your holy name.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Seth. And I must say, you started your discussion with a reference to the Christmas Eve fire that occurred here, and I want to tell you how thankful we all are for your efforts and those of your church in raising over $7,000 to help these people. So thank you.[663.54][663.54](Applause). Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Middler.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney.
Here.
Borough Administrator.
Once again, I want to thank councilpeople Kim Cho Han, Hale and Welkowitz for committing to another few years here on council. The work that all of you have done over the last, well, for some of you, years, and for you, Matt, in just a short period of time, you have proven yourself here on council. All three of you are so dedicated, I'm delighted to have you back on our team. Welcome again.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution on rules of order for 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution on the mission statement for the Borough of Highland Park?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
I'm calling for a nomination for President of Council for 2019.
I move to elect Phil George.
May I have a motion that nominations be closed for 2019 and Council President-Elected Phil George is nominated by acclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. No roll call. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to establish the 2019 Standing Committees?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Clerk, would you report the receipt of notification from the Fire Department of the election of new fire chief, assistant fire chiefs and captains, along with the 2019 roster?
I received notification from the Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department of the election of Jay Lippman as the fire chief, Tony Zamaretta as first assistant chief, and Morty Gershon as second assistant chief. Bill Bright will serve as captain, Matt Flower will serve as engineer, and Andrew Schwartz and Miguel Rondon will serve as assistant engineers, for terms to expire December 31st, 2020. I was also provided with a roster of membership for 2019.
May I have a motion to confirm the election?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Okay. We'll now do the oath of office and allegiance, and I will administer it to the fire chief, assistant chiefs and lieutenants. Would you all come up, please? I'm sorry? Does anybody have someone that they would like to hold the Bible for them?
Yes.
Okay.
They have it. He brought his own. He brought his own. And here's a Bible, and here's a...
Another one.
See, that's his wife, and his wife over there. Yeah. (Inaudible). Because it's no kid down in the big room.
Okay. Okay. So when I say, "Say your name," would you each say your name?
(Inaudible).
I say your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of fire chief, assistant chief and captain.
(Inaudible).
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, so help God. At this point, each of the councilpeople will give their annual report. I just want to quickly mention that each councilperson has an area of responsibility and a committee that they chair. So starting on my left, Councilwoman Elsie Foster Dublin chairs the Public Safety Committee. Josh Fine, next to her, chairs the Finance Committee. Next to me, Council President Phil George chairs the Public Works Committee. Councilwoman Susan Welkowitz chairs Economic Development. Next to her, Councilman Matt Hale chairs the Health and Human Services Committee. And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han chairs the Arts and Recreation Committee. So that is something that I think is important for you all to understand. They work very, very hard on many issues, but these are their main areas of focus. And so Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, would you like to start us off tonight with your report?
Sure, Mayor. First, good evening and welcome. I'm glad to be back. It's the first meeting of the year. I think I missed like the quarter, the end of the quarter meetings, I was on vacation. But there really isn't no place like Highland Park, so I'm glad to be back. As the mayor said, I chair Recreation and Arts. So I'm just going to briefly go through in detail my committees, and if we have any openings that some residents may be interested in volunteering in. So to start off, the Arts Commission. The purpose of the Arts Commission is to support and facilitate cultural programs in Highland Park for the benefit of its residents. Such programs may include dance, theater, music, visual arts, poetry, spoken word, culinary arts, fashion design, paper arts and woodworking. And we do have a few openings on this commission. Community Services. The Highland Park Borough Social Worker provides information and assistance to seniors, disabled adults and anyone who lives in Highland Park. Department on Aging. The Office of Aging and Disabled Services is designated to advocate, plan, coordinate and provide wide programs and services for senior citizens and disabled persons residing in Highland Park. And we do have openings on Council on Aging on that committee. Municipal Alliance is dedicated to the prevention of alcohol, tobacco and other drug abuse in our Highland Park Committee, and we have openings there as well. Recreation Department and Community Events. The Office of Recreation offers various youth and adult sports programs such as our recently annual holiday dinner or our snow shoveling program. Activities as our mass making or our very popular theater program. And events such as our Fourth of July fireworks in the parks that brings neighboring residents to our Donaldson Park. Veterans Day and Memorial Day parades as well, throughout the year, that appeal to a wide range of people throughout our community. Our Junior Recreation Advisory Committee members are needed. So these are juniors and seniors that's currently in high school. The Historic Commission. The Historic Commission seeks to promote the maintenance and rehabilitation of Highland Park's historical resources and to promote awareness of the borough's heritage. A few openings on the Historic Commission is available there, too. So in the beginning of 2018, when all of us actually, we met with the mayor, and we have five goals, and I wanted to go back to those goals, kind of like my 2018 New Year's resolutions, and really kind of recap those goals and how my portfolio kind of contribute to these goals that we've all established. And the goals are tax stabilization, downtown development, infrastructure, quality of life and transparency. So redeveloping and restoring downtown. What better way than bringing arts to our downtown? This year, the Arts Commission teamed up with a local Main Street merchant to offer a free workshop, Learn to Draw Comics, that were held at the Fallout Shelter. The Arts Commission finished the year out strong with the installation of the Band-Aid Bench. Now before your wheels begin turning on what the heck is a Band-Aid Bench, two words, public art. Highland Park is home to Earl Dickerson, the inventor of the Band-Aid. In honor of this resident, on Main Street will set a mosaic tile bench. The Arts and Historic Commission collaborated on this project.
That is something that I think is important for you all to understand. They work very, very hard on many issues, but these are their main areas of focus. And so Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, would you like to start us off tonight with your report?
Sure, Mayor. First, good evening and welcome. I'm glad to be back. It's the first meeting of the year. I think I missed like the quarter, the end of the quarter meetings, I was on vacation. But there really isn't no place like Highland Park, so I'm glad to be back. As the mayor said, I chair Recreation and Arts. So I'm just going to briefly go through in detail my committees, and if we have any openings that some residents may be interested in volunteering in. So to start off, the Arts Commission. The purpose of the Arts Commission is to support and facilitate cultural programs in Highland Park for the benefit of its residents. Such programs may include dance, theater, music, visual arts, poetry, spoken word, culinary arts, fashion design, paper arts and woodworking. And we do have a few openings on this commission. Community Services. The Highland Park Borough Social Worker provides information and assistance to seniors, disabled adults and anyone who lives in Highland Park. Department on Aging. The Office of Aging and Disabled Services is designated to advocate, plan, coordinate and provide wide programs and services for senior citizens and disabled persons residing in Highland Park. And we do have openings on Council on Aging on that committee. Municipal Alliance is dedicated to the prevention of alcohol, tobacco and other drug abuse in our Highland Park Committee, and we have openings there as well. Recreation Department and Community Events. The Office of Recreation offers various youth and adult sports programs such as our recently annual holiday dinner or our snow shoveling program. Activities as our mass making or our very popular theater program. And events such as our Fourth of July fireworks in the parks that brings neighboring residents to our Donaldson Park. Veterans Day and Memorial Day parades as well, throughout the year, that appeal to a wide range of people throughout our community. Our Junior Recreation Advisory Committee members are needed. So these are juniors and seniors that's currently in high school. The Historic Commission. The Historic Commission seeks to promote the maintenance and rehabilitation of Highland Park's historical resources and to promote awareness of the borough's heritage. A few openings on the Historic Commission is available there, too. So in the beginning of 2018, when all of us actually, we met with the mayor, and we have five goals, and I wanted to go back to those goals, kind of like my 2018 New Year's resolutions, and really kind of recap those goals and how my portfolio kind of contribute to these goals that we've all established. And the goals are tax stabilization, downtown development, infrastructure, quality of life and transparency. So redeveloping and restoring downtown. What better way than bringing arts to our downtown? This year, the Arts Commission teamed up with a local Main Street merchant to offer a free workshop, Learn to Draw Comics, that were held at the Fallout Shelter. The Arts Commission finished the year out strong with the installation of the Band-Aid Bench. Now before your wheels begin turning on what the heck is a Band-Aid Bench, two words, public art. Highland Park is home to Earl Dickerson, the inventor of the Band-Aid. In honor of this resident, on Main Street will set a mosaic tile bench. The Arts and Historic on Main Street will set a mosaic tile bench. The Arts and Historic Commission collaborated on this project. And speaking of the Historic Commission, this year, the Borough, the Borough brought the formerly known as the HP Historic Society on as a Borough Commission. After months of going back and forth with ordinance edits, the HP Historic Commission was formed. One of their first projects called Stepping Through Time gave residents a glimpse of local life along Main Street during the 1900s through a walking tour. The tour became so popular that the Commission decided to add on another date. Arts and Historic Commission will continue to work with Main Street Highland Park so that we can have a downtown that all Highland Parkers envision. Strengthening Infrastructure. May 2017, the Borough reviewed the Senior Youth Center Building. 2018 came a new name, Highland Park Community Center, along with a fresh coat of paint in our activity rooms and lobby area, new blinds for our windows, and we're also hopeful to get updated furniture in our lobby area 2019. Our community center is used by almost every commission the Borough has formed. And a second home for our residents. It is time for a makeover. If you are interested in sponsoring this project, please reach out to me via email or phone. Stabilizing Taxes. 2018, Highland Park residents experienced the smallest recreation programs increase in seven years while still keeping our low income rate at 40%. We continue to find new revenue streams through sports sponsors and grants. 2019, we will be looking to have registration for recreation programs available online. Stay tuned for more details. Promoting Quality of Life. Together, Municipal Alliance provided senior educational programs throughout the year to our senior citizens that are raising their grandchildren by supporting many programs and intergenerational events such as our annual senior prom. Also, the Arts Commission put together a books, a book art program for our preschool youth acknowledging many of our recreation programs begin at age five or six. Lastly, in April 2018, I led efforts in celebrating Seek Awareness Month, which promotes an ongoing effort to bring an end to hate crimes. Practicing Transparency. With the new identity of the Highland Park Community Center, I want to remind those who might have been hesitant to join or attend programming in the past to the build, due to the building being called Senior Center, that the center isn't just for senior members and that program is geared towards all age groups and always has been, has. As always, reach out to the staff or myself with any questions. This is just a small snippet of my Recreation and Arts portfolio. I have many goals for my first full term on council, and I also hope to hear from you about what our Borough needs to stay strong. I look forward to working with all of you on these initiatives and more. Have a health, have a happy and healthy 2019. That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hale, do you have a report for us?
I do have a report. I wanted to point out that, that when I first joined the council, in the fishbowl room over there was a, up on the, was, was a spreadsheet, sort of a handwritten spreadsheet with all of the goals that the council members had, had put together. And as the councilwoman mentioned, they're in, in some specific areas. And I remember looking at those goals, saying, wow, they're, they're reaching for the sky a little bit here. They're, they're, the, 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 the high level of goals that they set. Actually, to be honest, I looked at them and said, what is that? What does that mean? I don't understand that. Over the last couple of months, I've sort of walked through many of the goals that we set, many of the ways that, 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 many of the ideas. And I've learned that not only has this council sort of reached high for goals, but they actually know how to go about accomplishing them in a slow and a sort of deliberate way that I think is, is pretty impressive. So, I, I, the goals that we set before are the goals that all of the council members have set. And I just wanted to congratulate all of them for sort of the process that they've gone through with that. I'm just gonna highlight a very small slice of that and, and one particular area that I think really needs to be highlighted. And I want to do that as a way of saying thank you to my predecessor, Matt Hirsch. Matt Hirsch was a council member that, that, that I, I am struggling every day to sort of fill his shoes. We made a joke that you needed a Matt H. as a council member. And so, I think that's one of the reasons I got the job. But, but, you know, Matt, Matt has been more than, than I could ever imagined in sort of helping me understand what's going on in council, helping me think through what's going on with council. But also making sure that the idealism that he brings to everything that he does stays where you are, stays, stays front and center. As Senator Diagnon said, that, you know, he comes to Highland Park to counteract all of the things that are going on in the rest of the world. And I think that's an ideal that we try and live by. And I think that Matt is certainly a embodiment of that. And, and he has left the council, but he has not left Highland Park, as anyone on Facebook will know. He is actively involved in many different places, and, and he's here tonight. And I'm embarrassing him a lot. So, I wanted to say thank you very much, Mayor. The area that I wanted to highlight under the goals is, is really a quality of life goal. And it's one that Matt spearheaded, and it's one that Matt directed. And it has to do with the, the way that we treat immigrants and refugees in this community. Pastor Seth mentioned that as well, that, that Highland Park has gone out of our way and has worked very, very hard to make sure that we are treating immigrants and refugees in a, in the way that they ought to be treated, and that we have a fair and welcoming community. And so, the accomplishment that, that I wanted to point out was a, a resolution that started under Matt's watch, the Fair and Welcoming Resolution for Highland Park, which we were able to pass this year. And that's, there was a number of meetings that took place throughout the year. There was a great deal of discussion. But at the end of the day, we were able to pass a, a, a resolution that really does make a statement that Highland Park is a place that is fair and welcoming to all people. We, we, the, the, the resolution restricts the amount of assistance, monetary and otherwise, that Highland Park can give to federal immigration officials. I think that's important. Prevents undue questioning of individuals about immigration status. Reaffirms the Borough's commitment to non-discrimination in municipal services, and protects the privacy of individuals regardless of immigration status. And that's really something that Matt championed and still continues to champion to this day. And I, I think that's a true accomplishment for the, for the council and for the Borough. And so, I wanted to make sure that we recognize that. But also that we recognize that, that beyond just immigrants, there is a, a great deal of work that we need to do as a community to continue to bring us together as Highland Parkers. We have some, some issues that, obviously, we, we had a meeting last month that talked about all of the issues in terms of, of, of creating a bias-free Highland Park. Those are gonna continue in 2019. All of those issues that we have discussed are not going away, and we're gonna put them front and center. And we're gonna do that with another person who's not here tonight that I think we really need to thank very much. Because all of the issues that we talk about in terms of how we as a community treat each other, really, all of our efforts, really, I think, are centralized and, and come through our Human Relations Commission. And the Chair of our Human Relations Commission is Ashton Burrell. And I, I don't, I don't think I have to explain who Ashton is to most people in this room. He is a dynamo when it comes to organizing and getting things done. I'll just highlight one thing that, that I think is important to recognize. He was recently appointed as the Chair of the Statewide Human Relations Council, which is, I looked it up, he's 26. That means he's half the age of anybody who's ever done that before. And I think that's a true testimony to the fact of all of the things that he's been able to do in Highland Park, all of the programs that he's been able to, to put forth with the help of, of, of Matt and, and many others. And I think that as his, his role increases in 2019, that's a real testimony to Highland Park's commitment to improving a wide rate, variety of, of, of issues in the community. So, I, I, I think I'm gonna hi, just focus on those two very specific issues, those two very specific people. One of many that are wonderful things about Highland Park, but I think those two deserve some, some, some recognition for the work that they've done for this year. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welkowitz, would you give us your report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and welcome, and Happy New Year. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Thank you to the mayor and my fellow councilpersons for getting us through this past year, another year of tight budgets, crazy schedules, and for managing all the stuff that comes up so unexpectedly. It's a pleasure and privilege to serve with all of you. Thank you to Senator Diagnon for once again administering my oath of office. That was the second or maybe third time. So, thank you very much. And thank you for supporting everything we do here in Highland Park. Thanks to our Assembly Persons, Nancy Pinkin and Rob Karabinchik. Thanks to our department heads who are here tonight. And thanks to our first responders. And congratulations to the firefighters. And thanks also for our esteemed Democratic Committee members for all of your support. I'm Susan Welkowitz, and I chair Economic Development, which includes Code Enforcement, Planning and Zoning Boards. The council has our Redevelopment Agency, our Rehabilitation Screening Committee, Main Street, and our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. I'd like to focus my year-end report on one specific goal we've been working on. Since we're relevant to this project, I'll report in more depth on our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee's project to improve our quality of life and public safety, and to embark on an updated plan to explore community needs and opportunities for improving conditions and safety for all roadway users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and wheelchair users. This project is with assistance and funding from the New Jersey Department of Transportation's Bicycle and Pedestrian Program. While we are not receiving any hard dollars, we have been assigned a representative at the New Jersey Department of Transportation, and the premier planning and consulting firm of WSP will be organizing, managing, and recommending improvements for the project. It is their professional findings that we will be able to rely on when the project nears completion, on what improvements we can make here in Highland Park. A couple of things I want to emphasize here. One, finding the right kind of grant. Two, timing. Three, communication, both outreach and input are vital. And four, endurance. And perhaps you'll get a better understanding of the work involved to include residents in the process. Number one, the right grant. We had known about this Department of Transportation program for a couple of years. However, we needed to line up our studies and reports. We had to have a documented school travel plan analysis. We had to demonstrate both the need and ability to work towards the goal of making improvements. We knew we needed help in this area, and we simply could not otherwise afford this project. Fortunately, we were able to apply and be approved for the program, and that was back in 2017. The timing of this grant is also fortunate. As I mentioned, we had been looking at this for a while. And in, going forward in 2019, we have budgeted for a review of our master plan, which is required now by 2020. That project, being run through our Planning Board, will be headed by our previous mayor, Steve Nolan. Thank you, Steve, for stepping up. This new bicycle and pedestrian plan can dovetail nicely into those efforts and make the master plan most comprehensive. Three, communication. We started working towards this project in 2015, 2016. It was in 2018 that we had our first public meetings, which were organized by WSP. In March, we held our kickoff meeting with staff, with our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee volunteers, our New Jersey Department of Transportation Rep. Bill Rivieri, and our WSP consultants, Pete Kramer and Deb Hartman. We established a steering committee. We identified two focus groups. One, made up of a diverse range of businesses, retail, restaurants, personal services, et cetera. And two, members from our community, arts community, committee members, institutions, artists, people from the library, Sustainable Highland Park, Environmental Commission, Universal Access, our Highland Park Schools, public safety, and a few places of worship. In April, we had a table at Earth Day. In May, our consultant was at our street fair and farmer's market, talking to people about our project, interviewing people, and advertising an online survey and interactive map, which was up for about three months. We had a stakeholder meeting in the spring. The focus groups met in July. We had our second stakeholder meeting in November. We reviewed our outreach. We also looked at these existing conditions by reviewing the data, analyses, municipal-wide inventory, and assessment. We've identified several areas for improvements. Several river road crossings, the northeast corridor tunnel, a road diet for Upper Raritan or Route 27, the bridge walkways, pedestrian safety on River Road and Raritan Avenues, infrastructure disrepair, lack of pedestrian and ADA requirements, level of traffic stress for all users, interest to create bicycle facilities, and more bicycle parking along Raritan Avenue. From here, we are looking at concepts and recommendations for improvements. By February and March, we should have a draft for improvements to include concepts for priority intersections and recommendations for bicycle network. A final report is due around the summer of 2019. We expect the recommendations to vary from quick and inexpensive to perhaps a larger prop, project for which funding may be key here. Prioritization of the recommendations would follow with an action plan, which may be spread out over time. So, number four, endurance. I will keep you posted as our project continues. I would like to thank all the volunteers that have participated to date in this project, and all the residents who responded to the survey and, and went on the interactive map. Your contribution is the basis of our data and analyses. Special thanks to Tris Sanchez and Sean Meehan, Chair and Vice Chair of our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee. As I mentioned earlier, I work with other departments and boards. I'd like to thank Director of Code, Scott Brecher, for his continued efforts to streamline our processes and make things more efficient. We've hired additional part-time inspectors, and we are well positioned to take on the upcoming new development of the American Properties site on Cleveland Avenue. Last year, we also created the opportunity for code violations to be paid at the department, avoiding court time, court costs, and overtime costs. I'd like to thank Judy Richmond, Chair of our Zoning Board, for pushing us to have best communication practices across departments and boards. Therefore, in October, Borough Administrator Terry Hovere and I presented an update of land use matters in Highland Park to the zoning board. I'd like to thank Kim Hammond, Chair of our Planning Board, for working closely with Ms. Hovere in keeping us on schedule with getting the many development plans and documents in order to be approved this year on an almost impossible schedule. I especially want to thank our Borough Administrator, Terry Hovere, for managing our fair share housing obligation plan and keeping us on schedule and informed. That's been a heavy lift and very unexpected this year, but it set us on a course of action to finally, finally settle a 20-years-long litigation. This will certainly free up our time and energies and also cut back on the high attorney fees we've all had to pay for. Thanks to our Borough Planner, Jim Constantine, for organizing our neighborhood meetings and working on the redevelopment plan at 31 River Road, and for continually representing Highland Park's vision to potential develop- Highland Park's vision to potential developers and the other plans that you worked on this year as well. Thank you to Main Street staff, Director Rebecca Hirsch, Kim Van Arthos, and Javier Zavala, and all of our many, many volunteers who help on our boards and subcommittees to supporting our events and planting days. There was seriously not a weekend where something wasn't going on downtown. In 2018, our Arts in the Park is now five times larger than when it began, with over 250 vendors. It is one of the most highly-respected juried arts events in New Jersey. This was the second year of our very successful Small Business Weekend, and our first time to have an open-air holiday bazaar. Our farmer's market thrives and runs from May through December. Thanks to St. Peter's Hospital for their generous support, and thank you to all the supporters of our 5K race. I seriously can't thank our volunteers enough. If you can carve out any time, please consider joining one of our committees or helping out on any of the many volunteer projects that we have going on throughout the year. We are a small community, and the contributions of our residents make this town run in the very Highland Park way in which we want to be known, culturally strong and generous to our fellow residents. Thank you to everyone who reached out to us and contributed to the families affected by the Christmas fire on Cedar Lane. It's heartwarming to know how much people care. And if I may leave you with one quote from President Barack Obama. "In the end, service binds us to each other and to our community and to our country in a way that nothing else can." Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just, Mayor, can I just, I forgot one thing. I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I didn't point out my two department heads that's here, the head of Recreation, Andrea Bay, and Kimberly McGraw of Department of Senior Services. Thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't miss you in my port, don't kill me later.
Okay, Councilman Fine, do you have a report for us?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. As the Council's Finance Chair, I am committed to exploring ways to stabilize municipal property taxes. Negotiating and implementing additional shared services is one way in which we can work to try to stabilize our high property taxes. To that end, in 2018, two possible shared services were identified that may help save money for the borough. They are pursuing a shared service agreement with Edison for maintenance of borough vehicles, and pursuing a joint municipal court. As to a shared service for vehicle maintenance, our Borough Administrator has reached out to Edison Township, which is interested in further discussing this idea in early 2019. In regard to a joint municipal court, I met with the mayor, Borough Administrator, and Governor Murphy's two shared services hours, Nicholas Platt and Jordan Glatt, in regard to pursuing a joint municipal court with other municipalities in Middlesex County. And it is something that I hope to work on further in 2019. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster Dublin, could you give us your year-end report?
Wow. Thank you, Mayor. What a year. My areas of responsibilities are public safety. And public safety includes our Police Department, Fire Department, First Aid Squad, Office of Emergency Management, our Community Response Team, called CERT, the Municipal Court, and something that is both under CERT and OEM is our Code Blue Team. And we desperately need volunteers to serve in Code Blue. And you may ask, what is Code Blue? Code Blue is when the weather temperature drops below zero, we open up our community center, and people can come in for a warm place. It's open from 7:00 at night until 7:00 in the morning, and people can come in, and it's a warming center where you can stay warm during those cold months. In the summertime, when it's too hot outside and it goes over 100, it becomes a cooling center. And again, it's open at that time for people to come in and cool themselves and have a cool place to stay during those hot, hot, hazy days of summer. We do need volunteers to come out and to help us to make the center, to keep the center open. And as I said, it'll be open from 7:00 at night until 7:00 in the morning, because as of 7:00 in the morning, the maintenance crew has to come in, and we have to clean up and let it become our community center again. I just want to report on one of the great accomplishments of my tenure being here on council, and that was the opening of the Teen Center, the long-awaited Highland Park Teen Center. It was a project long in the making, and this year, when we opened, we asked a teen to name the center, and we did a competition, and they came up with Zone 16 Teen Center. And the reason why it's Zone 16, it's on the Sixth Avenue, and it's right next door on Sixth, and it's the zone, as they call it. And as they say, if you know what zone is, it's really cool, and once you know, once you're in the know, you're in the know. So I was not in the zone until they told me what Zone 16 was. With that said, they have quite a number of things going. It's been, our director over there is Ashton Burrell, and we're really pleased with the kind of programming and the kind of following that he has from the young people. The Zone 16 Center, it's open from ninth to 12th grade students here in Highland Park. And some of the things they do is college prep, they've taken up a photography class, they're doing painting and gardening, they have monthly speakers that come in, and they talk an array of different subjects. They'll be going on different trips and doing a host of other events as it pertains to young people, and them becoming creative and making their own and designing their own things, not with my help, of course, because I'm too old for their projects. We have a number of partners in the Zone 16 Center, such as the Jewish Renaissance, Middlesex County, Edison Job Corps, the Highland Park School District, and along with some fraternities that have come into partnership to make the Zone 16 a place where young people can go, get creative ideas, produce things of their own. And from this, we even have a team of landscapers that was at Zone 16, and they started the planting over there, and they got the idea that they can go out and start their own intrapreneurship, doing landscaping and snow removal and that kind of thing. So already, we're seeing the fruits that the Teen Center has borne for our young people. I'm really happy that it's here and that it's being utilized. When I drove by this evening, there were young people in there, so I was really pleased that we put something together that everyone can use and has been using. With that said, that's pretty much my report, but I do want to say something as it pertains to public safety. The Teen Center is under the public safety umbrella, and the idea came up a number of years ago when I wanted was to create a PAL, which is a Police Activity League. And when I first came on board, those were really, really popular. They still remain popular, and we have a lot of support from the Highland Park Police Department that is engaged and involved, and they go over and they play games, or they might shoot a basketball, or just hang out with the kids, and that's the kind of relationship we encourage, we want to see happening in Highland Park with our young people, fostering and having better community and police relationships. Those are important. But with that said, and as though I'm very pleased, as being the Chair of Public Safety for many years, this was a very difficult year for us in Highland Park. We had a number of incidents that happened, and from First Aid, the police, to the different areas that we see issues in, and I believe that it became us against them, or you against us. And I did not like the way 2018 ended, sitting here on the council, because each and every one of us as councilmember that sit here and volunteer their time and try to improve the quality of life in our community, we give our heart, our soul, our energy, and our efforts, and volunteer our families and give of ourselves to make Highland Park the kind of community it is. We will continue to strive to do so, but I implore each and every one of you that as you come in and you have concerns, and there are many concerns that we should have, and I'm glad to live in a community where people come and voice their concern, but remember, we're not your enemies. We're here to work together, and we can only accomplish things through changes and through change and truly working together. Being divisive will never change anything, but coming together as a community to solve our problems will be able to do so. Thank you so much. God bless everyone, and have a great year.
Council President George, do you have your year-end report for us?
I do, Mayor. But first, I'd like to thank Senator Deignan, Assemblywoman Pinkin, Assemblyman Karabinchik. Mostly, I'd like to thank my fellow legislators. We sometimes forget, as councilpeople, that we are also legislators, that we make policy, we pass ordinances and resolutions that directly impact everyone. I want to thank you for the cooperation my last year as council president. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to even more in 2019. Senator Deignan reminded me of a story that put me directly in touch with DPW during the election, and it was about two younger men, a generation earlier than us, when my father, running for mayor in his first term in South Plainfield, knocked on the door of Mr. Deignan. And it brought back a warm moment, but on top of that, it made me think of what my father taught me about DPW. He said, first, you have to make sure the roads are paved well, so that the policemen, the firemen, and the ambulances can get to your residents. And after that, once you've had that done, you're running a good government because it's invisible. DPW, more often than not, is, and I talk about all of public works, but it's highly visible because you may complain about the roads not being great. You may complain about the barriers because a section of road is closed off for sewer repair. You may complain because they're working on a water line in front of your house, or it's leaking. What we did, when I took this over from former Councilman Walsh, one of the projects was, and the big theme of this year was to coordinate, the infrastructure problem that we're facing and the infrastructure of DPW. You see the garbage trucks, we have a lot of stuff. We have really big trucks. We have really big holes. We have really big water on the streets. But the infrastructure that we're going to have to worry about in 2019 is underground in water and sewer. That's going to be the big push. It was the big push in 2018. You all know about the water rate increase, but we tried to talk about why and put a finger on it. As a result, the administration and I started meeting regularly with Middlesex Water to talk about what we can expect and why we can expect it. One of our best meetings we had was an actual sit-down, pencil-it-out sketch of what we can do to start controlling that rate more. The second thing was that, in order to understand this problem, and on inspiration of a local professional who works with these underground systems and whom I thank very much for his guidance, was actually starting to look down the manholes. Now, you may say that politics is septic. We really were in the sewers, taking a look at what's going on. When we talk about infiltration, when we start to talk about treatments and capital improvements for infiltration, what does it mean? Well, I'll tell you what it means. It means looking down a 15-foot, 110-year-old manhole to see how the bricks are leaking water. So now, we can translate that into action, to translate that into selection of capital achievements to make that work. Someone else pointed me to two major leaks around Raritan that might be fixable by camera and remote, so no more, we can save money that way. So continuing with this coordination, we coordinated with STACK, and STACK and some of these other groups, you know, they seem to function in the woods, they seem to function with the butterflies and the trees, but in reality, STACK coordinated with DPW and administration to warn us about the Emerald Ash Borer program, which directly affects everyone who has an ash tree, including our 75 ash trees that we've started removing, and put together a plan to accomplish that removal. Another coordination which I helped with, and I found very, very interesting and very rewarding, and also with Councilwoman Kim Chilhans group, was the request of a religious organization to do a contemplation and meditation program in the Meadows Trail. But in coordinating that, it's regulated land, it's environmentally sensitive, and has a lot of concerns. So to coordinate that, I called a meeting of the Arts Commission, the Religious Group, the Arts Collective, which is the informal group of artists in town, and DPW. We all met, we sat down on a Sunday morning, we resolved the program. The program offered by the Religious Group was very successful and very well-visited, and we look forward to that next time. In 2019, then, having accomplished this goal in 2018, the goal will be more intense cooperation and collaboration in groups. And finally, a note specifically with the plastic bag ordinance that will be coming up, was a process that was developed through everyone and the State Assembly and the State Senate in cooperating with all of us. And we look forward to that same cooperation, as well as the transparency which we have initiated by much earlier advertisement and publication of proposed ordinances, when they're impactful, or when they bring up a question. So I look forward to all of that. I look forward to working with my fellow legislators this year to accomplish some real nuts-and-bolts things in Highland Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. It's my turn, folks. And first, I want to welcome all of our elected officials here tonight. Freeholder Charlie Tomaro, Senator Deignan, Assemblywoman Pinkin, and Assemblyman Karabinchik. I also want to welcome former Mayor Smith here with us tonight. Thank you all for coming. Also want to thank our public safety team, our Police Department leaders here for coming out tonight, all of the department heads that are here, and the residents who care enough about this community to give up a Wednesday evening and sit with us here.
I am continuously honored by the opportunity to serve as your mayor, and as your mayor, my top priority is to improve life in the borough of Highland Park. In this address, I want to take a step back and take stock of some of the significant accomplishments this past year. I'll do so by focusing on the five priority issues you've heard iterated here tonight. These are the most important issues and goals of my administration: tax stabilization, downtown development, infrastructure, quality of life, and transparency. And tax stabilization is number one. Sustainability and new revenue for Highland Park are combined in a PSE&amp;G solar field, which will be built on a closed borough landfill. The purpose of this project is clean energy research that will benefit not only Highland Park, but the entire state. Approvals from DEP are finally in, and we will see the beginning of construction in 2019. The rental income from PSE&amp;G represents new revenue for our municipality. We have built a strong suite of shared services and are seeking more opportunities with surrounding municipalities. I want to thank Councilman Fine for his intense work on this matter. Working closely with the governor's-appointed shared service hours, we are actively exploring creative ways to share costs and cut expenses. We hope to flesh out a few new promising leads in the early spring of 2018. Our active pursuit of grants from the state and federal governments have yielded nearly $500,000 in funds for various programs and improvements in Highland Park. I'm happy to say that the affordable housing litigation that we've been involved in for over a decade is coming to a close with the court's acceptance of our Fair Share Housing settlement. This will eliminate one of the most costly and time-consuming litigations we have been involved in. Due to sound financial management, I am pleased to report Due to sound financial management, I am pleased to report that the borough continues to maintain a respected AA+ bond rating. And it is critical that we find ways to increase the ratables in our borough in order to stabilize our real estate taxes. Right now, almost the entire burden of our taxes falls on our residents. As I've said many times before, the economic future of our municipality depends upon smart downtown development. So let's talk about downtown development. I'm encouraged by the number of current property owners in our downtown that have caught on to our redevelopment fever. It's exciting to see the first of those projects, expansion of the former site of the International Food Market underway. The new structure will house apartments, office space, and retail. An exciting gateway mixed-use project to occupy an area of Raritan Avenue between Second Avenue and First Avenue on the south side required environmental investigation, and that has been underway this year. The study has been funded by an environmental grant, and a proposal that would fund the second phase of the investigation will be submitted this month. We've also made progress towards the creation of a new Borough Square project in the center of our downtown. The borough purchased the building that houses our Main Street Highland Park organization adjacent to our popular farmer's market on borough-owned property as a first step towards increasing our options for redevelopment in that area. Next steps will be a public planning process to help us shape the future development on that site. Several other developers have approached us with ideas for other areas of potential downtown development. Highland Park remains a highly desirable area for its walkability, proximity to Rutgers, New Brunswick Train Station, and area hospitals. I also want to note that Jim Constantine, our borough planner, is here with us tonight and has been working very closely with us on all of these new development opportunities. But new development is not going to be possible without addressing our infrastructure issues. As with most of the Northeast, Highland Park's infrastructure is old and in need of constant repair. Our roads are no exception. In 2018, PSE&amp;G, as part of their gas line replacement project, has been working on Hilton, South Ninth Avenue, Lilac Street, South Eleventh Avenue, Highland Avenue, Dartmouth Street, Graham Street, Sparkle, North Second Avenue, and Seville. Their reconstruction of some of these roads will be completed in the spring. At that same time, our Public Works Department will be moving forward with repairs to portions to North Third Avenue, Maryland, and South Seventh Avenues, as well as Hilton Street. Also, during 2018, with the help of Research Consulting Services LLC, we conducted a thorough assessment of Highland Park's streets based on a sophisticated rating system. The results of this study will guide decisions on annual road repairs. The survey data is now being merged and entered into the borough's pavement management software, and the borough will create a five-year plan for road repairs by the spring of 2019. In an effort to better control our water resources and expenses, in early 2019, the borough will implement a program to install brand-new, state-of-the-art water meters on many of our larger buildings to more accurately monitor usage and prevent waste. Additionally, I've asked the borough administrator to continue to identify the best management practices for our water and sewer department, and to recommend a long-term plan for improvement in 2019. Middlesex County has instituted a new recycling policy in 2018, and the borough is gearing up for these changes. New educational guidelines have been issued and made available at Borough Hall and on our Facebook and webpages. We'll conduct more informational programs throughout the year about these changes throughout 2018 and 2019. Quality of Life. Councilwoman Foster Dublin spoke about our new teen center, Zone Six. It officially opened in October, and it continues to be the hub of activity for our high school students. The center is a safe and supervised place where our borough youth can do their homework, play video games, and build their skills using top-of-the-line technology provided by generous donors. Each time I visit Zone Six, it's actually diagonally across from my office, so I'm sure they're thrilled about that over there. Each time I visit Zone Six, I am warmly greeted by the teens who are there and engaged in many activities. They're very grateful to finally have a place of their own. This year, we created a new Bias-Free Commission. With the leadership of a core of active, thoughtful volunteers, we are poised to address concerns of bias in the borough, particularly as it affects policing and social justice throughout our community. It is my hope that they will ensure that my administration stays vigilant in making Highland Park a safe community for all our residents. And I've regularly convened and met with a group of area faith leaders that provides a useful perspective from our houses of worship, and was particularly helpful to me in the wake of the tragedy in Pittsburgh in late October, and in addressing how to reach members of our community from different faiths. This group includes leaders from the Christian, Jewish, and Muslim faiths, and I am hoping to expand representation from the Hindu and Buddhist faiths in 2019. This year, through our very active Arts Commission, Highland Park was able to join New Brunswick in inspiring windows of understanding programs, a public art program that addresses social justice issues. I am looking forward to expanding upon that concept as we begin a Tables of Understanding program in early 2019. Tables of Understanding will allow our residents to break bread together in meaningful, if sometimes difficult, conversation. And Highland Park remains committed to providing our residents with the basics for healthy living. Keeping our streets safe for pedestrians and bicyclists is part of our overall healthy living goals, and we will have our first-ever bicycle and pedestrian plan adopted in 2019. Thank you, Councilwoman Welkowitz. I hope more and more residents will continue to join me in our regular Walk with the Mayor events and Stretch with the Mayor, which actually, we run that in the winter months, and our first Stretch with the Mayor event is actually coming up tomorrow, January 3rd at 7:30 in the morning at Kinetix Flow Studio. I also want to give a big thank you, speaking of health, to the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Initiative for recognizing Highland Park as this year's healthy New Jersey community, and for the grant money they provided to assist with programming, especially for our seniors. We talked a little about transparency before. I want to talk a little more about it. We continue to hold open public meetings on issues of importance to the borough. In the spring and summer, we held meetings with residents in the neighborhood around Walter Avenue to discuss a new development on a property that was formerly a medical office. In the fall, we held two open forums on the draft ordinance to ban plastic bags. We also held a meeting to discuss our first aid services. In 2019, we'll continue with these open public discussions on such topics as policing in Highland Park and downtown development. We also had a new group formed here in Highland Park last year. The Civics for the Community Program, run by volunteers from our Public Information Committee, offered seminars featuring experts on taxation, plus federal, state, and county government. We will continue the series in 2019 with other civics topics. It's my hope that these programs will inspire more residents to get involved in government. In 2018, we adopted a new communications plan to increase residents' awareness of the activities of borough government. Starting in early 2019, we'll roll out a monthly talk by and with me, or a designated substitute, at the Highland Park Community Center. It's called What's New and What's News in the Borough. The first of these will be held next week on January 8th. And we'll have some flyers around town about that. We'll issue a monthly email with links to new news stories on our website, a quarterly mayor's blog with in-depth discussion on specific issues and more. And this year, thanks to input from our Public Information Committee, we've added more information about the council meeting agendas and minutes on our website. Also, in early 2019, we'll be redesigning the borough website to make it more user-friendly and enable our wealth of services and activities to be more easily discovered. And there's one last thing I want to discuss that's essential to our borough business, under the rubric of both quality of life and transparency. I think it's essential for everyone to know, and that is that much of the progress we've reported here would not be possible without the very active and thoughtful participation, the applied expertise, and the serious dedication of a cadre of volunteers who serve on our borough boards, commissions, and committees. The cynical view of government says that decisions that affect our lives, our taxes, and our way of life, are made by a very small group of like-minded people in a back room outside of any oversight by the citizens. Perhaps that is true somewhere, but in Highland Park, we practice governing openly and with broad engagement of our residents. Committee, commission, and board meetings are scheduled in advance, open to the public, and announced on our website, in our newsletter, and via email, as well as traditional media. Our municipal groups involve residents from all across town and from many religious, racial, and ethnic communities. These groups tackle serious issues, and their work often leads directly to official government actions. It was Sustainable Highland Park that secured a grant, conducted the research, held multiple surveys of residents and businesses, and produced the draft ordinance on banning plastic bags. It was the professional training, the subject matter expertise, and the passion of our Shade Tree Advisory Committee that produced a forestry management plan for the state and the understanding of the threat of the ash bora. Thank you for all your work on that as well, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor.
It is the love of the arts, the artistic drive, and the formidable organizing talents of the members of our Arts Commission that allows us to conduct art walks, chalk art contests, to participate for a second year in the Windows of Understanding Project and other activities. And it's the vision and abiding commitment to racial equality of the members of our Bias-Free HP that have led to the creation of a new arm of borough government that'll serve in coordination with the Human Relations Commission to receive concerns and advance concrete ideas that enhance fairness and intergroup relations in Highland Park. Highland Park has a reputation as a walkable community. Our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee has achieved accolades and lots of grant money to ensure that our walkers and cyclists are safe on our streets. Each year, they run a very popular bike rodeo with the help of the Police Department. They have been actively planning for new hiking and bicycling trails linking different parts of the borough. These are just five examples of dynamic citizen leadership, and believe me, there are many, many others. We have over two dozen active groups in town. These include the Principal People, who keep us informed on official meetings and events in town by running HPTV. Thank you, Gary Leslie. They help the needy in town by managing our community food pantry and by overseeing the fundraising, promotion, and logistics of Highland Park Gives a Hoot program. They advise us on borough messaging via the Public Information Committee, serve on the Teen Advisory Council, and make sure we understand the perspective of borough youth, provide regular programming to improve intergroup relations via the Human Relations Commission, make sure our land uses are sensible and compliant with applicable codes and borough priorities through the regular deliberations of the Planning and Zoning Boards, have made sure our borough is a more welcoming place through the work of the Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, help keep us safe through the work of the Community Emergency Response Team and the Emergency Management Council. These volunteers work hand-in-hand with the independent Volunteer First Aid Squad and Volunteer Fire Department, and they are supervised by our Chief of Police in his role as Public Safety Director. Others oversee critical initiatives in town by serving on the Board of Health, the Cable-TV Advisory Committee, the CDBG Advisory Committee, the Commission on Universal Access, the Council on Aging, the Environmental Commission, the Historic Commission, the Housing Authority, the Library Board of Trustees, the Mayor's Wellness Campaign, the Municipal Alliance, the Parking Review Task Force, the Recreation Advisory Committee, the Rehab and Redevelopment Screening Committee, the Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, and the Shared Services Commission. In an age when there is sadly so much cynicism about governance, it is our borough volunteers and our largely volunteer council members who provide a welcome counterbalance. Thank you all up here. They demonstrate the idealism that idealism can be rewarded, and that residents who do their homework and work with others can make a better life for us all. We are much stronger with the many volunteers on our team, and I thank them for their many, many contributions to Highland Park. So let's continue to work together. Here's to a 2019 of teamwork, peace, and progress. Thank you. And now, we'll get back to regular business. May I have a motion to adopt the following? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. May I have a motion to spread the message of the Mayor's Borough Address upon the minutes?
So moved.
Consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the following items, number 17 through?
Twenty-eight.
Number 28.
Mayor, I move to adopt Consent Agenda 17 through 28.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chilhans?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I'm appointing the following professionals to serve us in 2019. Borough Attorney Ed Schmier, Tax Appeal Attorney Martin Allen, Labor Attorney Robert Janskovitch...
No.
No.
I'm sorry, Labor Attorney Arthur Tebault. Borough Prosecutor Robert Janskovitch, Public Defender Roselli and Roselli, Bond Counsel Willens Goldman Spitzer, Borough Engineer David Samuel, Borough Auditor Gerard Stankovich, Borough Planner... Borough Engineer David Samuel, Borough Auditor Gerard Stankovich, Borough Planner James Constantine, Special Co-Arteny Jeffrey Serenian, Special Planner Phil Caton, Special Redevelopment Counsel Joseph Baumann, Risk Manager David Balkin. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I'm appointing the following: Deputy Court Administrator Linda Simons, Deputy Borough Clerk Jennifer Santiago, ADA Coordinator Lieutenant Gary Panachella, Library Board of Trustees Council Representative Joshua Fine. May I have a motion to confirm the appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to appoint Council Representative to Planning Board Susan Welkowitz?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Abstain.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution designating Council Representative to Middlesex County CDBG Committee Joshua Fine?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to adopt the 2019 municipal and water and sewer temporary budgets?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, at this point, we have fifteen minutes set aside for public discussion with a limit of three minutes per person. Does anybody have anything they would like to say? Please step up to the microphone. And just state your name and address for the record.
You can pull the mic out.
Hold it down.
Hi, my name is Arielle. I attend school at Rabbi Beisah Ramah Yeshiva at the end of Harrison Avenue on the Edison border. I understand Highland Park is a walk-in town. However, there is no sidewalk on either side of the street for the, for the last block from the bottom of Harrison Avenue up to, up to the school. I often walk in this area with friends and family in the afternoon, in the evening, and the weekends. Is there anything the town council can do to see if we can find a solution to construct the sidewalk? Thank you.
I'm sure that we can have our Public Works Committee talk about the possibility of adding sidewalks there, and they can work with our borough administrator to see if, what we can do, if, if anything can be done. So thank you, and they will address that, and we'll let you know. Thank you. Okay, any other public discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
This meeting is adjourned.